Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, good evening. It's good to see folks. The January 3rd, 2022 Committee of the Whole Board Meeting will now come to order. Mr. Lobach, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Moke, roll call, please.
Ms. Jaeger. Mrs. Budmer.
Here.
Mr. Estes.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Here.
Mrs. Sayad.
Here.
Mr. Lobach.
Here.
Dr. Muratelli.
Here.
Dr. Bruno.
Here. Thank you. Before we turn it over to Dr. Kaskowski to get us started with tonight's meeting, I did want to acknowledge that our very own Nancy Moke is celebrating a birthday today, and we thank her for celebrating her birthday. Thirty-two. With the community this evening. Thank you very much, Nancy. All right. Well, what we want to do is now move to our discussion around enrollment and space and facilities and next steps. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kaskowski to take us through this part of the meeting, which is, of course, the core reason in which we've gathered this evening. So, Dr. Kay?
All righty. Thank you. Andrew, you can go ahead to the next slide. Okay, just want to share with people that just because positivity rates have gone up so high, we're not putting people at tables tonight. But I do want revisiting the input from the November Committee of the Whole. So we'll take a pause in there and make sure that there aren't any questions. Tonight, what we're going to go through, as promised at our last meeting, is we will, I will give a brief update on the outcome of our CASADA report, which is our enrollment projections. We will revisit the follow-up from the November 1st Committee of the Whole. So the table groups had to brainstorm additional pros and cons to scenarios. So we had promised that we would bring that back. I will share that. We are going to have a community engagement presentation from Colin Corbett. He's here to join us tonight representing E.O. Sullivan. After that, there will be a quick action item to extend the S.H.I.E.L.D. contract at no cost to the district. Then we will have public comment, and then we'll move into closed session with no action to follow. I want to give a brief update, just today's status around the district attendance. We had a total of 639 students out today. As a comparison with pre-COVID attendance after winter break, when we typically would have about 289 students out. So we did have high student absences, and we had 60 staff members out. Today, we were able to stretch and move people around and cover it. Do want to share that we had our IASA Dupage meeting today, so all of the Dupage superintendents were on it. And we are not unique in that our biggest concern and challenge right now for the next couple of weeks is just staffing our buildings adequately. We've significantly grown our subpool, but, you know, not all subs are wanting to work right now. So we're just going to take it day by day to cover this and move people around as we can and just monitor and watch. Our call-in system principals are doing that, as is our HR department. We are in a good position, because if we had to take an emergency day, we do have an approved e-learning plan, so we could implement that, and it would not count as a missed day of instruction. That would have to be added on at the end. So we do have an improved e-learning plan, so we are able to do that. We hope that we do not have to. I want to remind everybody, reiterate the importance of students bringing home their Chromebooks nightly in the event that that were to happen. But again, our challenge right now is really just maintaining adequate number of adults to open and keep our buildings safely staffed. This was reiterated throughout the county. Everybody is having those same challenges. And I know one of the districts in Dupage was unable to open today. We were, and we had a very good day, but we had to stretch and move people around at the buildings. And then we utilized CSO staff out of the buildings to support S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, and we'll have to do that this week and next week, just to staffing shortages. But today, we were open, and things went well, and that is going to be our plan, and that is going to be our goal, that we continue to stay open. If we go on to the next slide, regarding CASADA, just want to give people a little bit of context. The CASADA study provides three different scenarios for projections. Scenario A is how CASADA described as, in the event that we are in a recession and things are in a pretty dismal place in the world economically and with the housing market. So A is less-than-anticipated growth and move-in and student enrollment. According to CASADA, they don't anticipate, they don't see A as being our reality, but it is a reality, one of the scenarios that they reported on. B scenario is what CASADA says is most likely to happen for District 41. And we'll review the numbers in a minute, but B represents minimal to moderate growth, different depending on grade levels and buildings, but B, they do believe, is the most likely scenario that we will be operating in. C scenario is greater-than-anticipated growth due to new residential development. C, they do believe is possible, but CASADA feels that the B scenario is most likely. The key takeaway that I want to focus everybody on is that we do have reason in two of the three scenarios to anticipate growth. Our current realities is that we know that even a minimal level of growth will impact class sizes. We also know that we do not have room at elementary to hire additional staff, because we don't have anywhere to put them, nor do we have the space if we remain in any kind of COVID social distancing. And even outside of that, once we get back to typical, we have very little space available to pull small groups of students. As we've discussed in meetings, kids are pulled out for services, and sometimes that happens in the hallway. So regardless of whether we end up in A, B, or C, we know that any level of growth will continue to present challenges for us, particularly at elementary. If we go on to the next slide, this is what Scenario B looks like, which is deemed most likely by CASADA. So you will see that from 21-22 to the 22-23 school year, they anticipate growth of 13 students at Lincoln, 15 students at Franklin. Churchill stays about the same, increase of about six at Forest Glen, and an increase of 23 at Hadley. If you look at the 23-24, you see a plus-three, plus-19, plus-11, plus-23, plus-eight at Hadley. I'm not going to read all of these. You can certainly do that on your own. You know, but Franklin is anticipated. You'll see across all of these years, it's plus-15, plus-19, plus-27, plus-25. At Hadley, plus-39 for the 25-26 school year. Keep in mind that this is just the minimal to moderate scenario. If you go on to the next slide, which is Scenario C, which is a greater-than-anticipated growth, or the second-most-likely scenario which CASADA still views as possible, you will see much higher numbers of growth. So plus-33 at Lincoln, plus-29 at Franklin, plus-26 at Churchill, plus-42 at Forest Glen, plus-39 at Hadley. Going into even higher, when you look at 23-24, 24-25, for example, at Forest Glen, if you follow that along, 23-24 would be plus-76 students. 24-25 would be plus-81. 25-26 would be plus-93. Churchill goes from 26 to plus-61 to plus-77 to plus-95. If you look at Hadley, you'll see very high numbers as well. So by 25-26, you see plus-102 students at Hadley. Again, this is not the scenario that CASADA projects as most likely, but this would be a very scary scenario for us to try and accommodate these type of growth numbers. So the takeaway really for CASADA, and we will provide, you know, we can share that full report and post that full report, really is that two of the three scenarios do indicate growth for District 41. Scenario C is very scary growth in terms of buildings that are already very overstretched. So that's just a quick, it's not an analysis from the last CASADA to this one. It's just what came out of this report. So we had said we would bring that back for people. Before we move on, any questions about CASADA that we can try to answer?
Board members, any questions about the report? No? Good.
And Jeff did ask a good question. Did they take into consideration that we lost some students either to homeschooling or to parochial schooling? And yes, CASADA was aware that during the pandemic, we have seen some people choose to homeschool their kids or select parochial school. And, you know, that accommodates some coming back, not all. Those will just have to be on a wait-and-see, as we saw some returned this year to us from parochial settings or homeschool, but not all. And so they were aware of that dynamic and that piece of data when they went into this report.
I noticed that some of the comparison, when you're looking at, some of the comparison was K enrollment rates versus like the number of eighth graders exiting.
Yes.
And as we've progressed in each CASADA report, we have more and more competitive districts that offer full-day kindergarten. And so we're seeing a greater, we're seeing much lower numbers at K than we are at, say, first grade. And I'm just wondering if he's taken that into account and if we're seeing, you know, if that, if that's kind of reflective that our kindergarten program isn't competitive.
Right. You know, I don't know that CASADA will do a cause and effect. I think that's information that we can reach out to local realtors and see how often, you know, in our interactions with clients, does that come up? You know, we can ask for feedback on that. If kindergarten would be your only child coming to District 41, and you've never enrolled here, you wouldn't be included in any of our surveys, so we wouldn't have that information. But perhaps there is a way to reach out to that segment of the population or the community and see what factor that played in, or even reaching out to our neighboring districts. And is that something that they're hearing when people choose them over us? But I don't know that CASADA would put a cause and effect to it like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Good. All right. Well, thank you.
Andrew, if you want to open up this online. Just to set a little context for people who weren't with us, we had presented four scenarios, and we'll walk people through the scenarios tonight. When we started our November Committee of the Whole meeting, district administration had brainstormed some pros and cons around every one of the scenarios presented. And then at that meeting, we had asked the participants to give us feedback and generate additional pros and cons that perhaps we had not thought of. I think it's important just to say that I carried over the feedback as it was on, you know, from the working document to here. And so some of the assumptions or pieces of feedback may not be accurate, but we can correct those any misunderstandings as we walk through those. So Scenario 1 was building the Early Learning Center, which would be pre-K and full-day kindergarten on the Churchill property with a Phase 2 construction of a Buildings and Grounds Storage facility at Spalding. Pros and cons that we had identified were that it solves most of our space needs. There is no need for a K5, a student, a referendum just to get approval, voter approval, to build a new attendance center. Before anything could move forward, the construction of a new attendance center, which is one of the scenarios, we wanted the community to know that just to build that, nothing about financing it, just to build it would require a referendum. So no need for a Student Attendance Center referendum. It places fewer students at buildings, because we would be moving kindergarten out of their home schools and into the pre-K full-day kindergarten center, which means less traffic and overall better experience at schools for the students remaining, improved circulation around the building, reduced dependence on inadequate spaces, and more opportunities for flexible learning environments, just because our elementary schools would not be so overcrowded. This option does not require any boundary changes. Cons of this option that we had identified was that it creates a strain on the area surrounding Churchill. Full-day kindergarten would not be at the home schools. There is an increased transportation cost, because we would be busing kindergarten students to the Churchill campus, and there's an increased operational cost with this scenario. So feedback that was generated at that committee meeting by the community that participated was that it's an easy transition for kids from preschool to kindergarten, because they would all be together. Early childhood focused all in one center, so we could cluster resources in that one area that were focused around early childhood and early learning. Some of the cons that were identified was increased traffic concerns around Churchill, lack of diversity of ages at each school building, because we would be removing kindergarten from the home schools. Busing of young children was identified as a con, although we currently do this with our preschool students. That's important to note. This option doesn't solve all of the problems, and it lacks a comprehensive solution or continues a piecemeal approach to space issues. Again, those were the pros and cons generated by the table groups. There were some questions generated that we want to answer. So will art and music get their classroom space back? The answer to that is yes, as long as we have the ability to do so based on any ongoing COVID mitigation requirement and enrollment numbers. If we don't at some point solve our space challenges, we know that we will have to continue to take spaces that have been typically allocated for art and music to keep class sizes down to the greatest extent possible. But the plan is to restore art and music to classrooms. There was a question asked in terms of why does FLESS not have a classroom? You know, and FLESS does not have a classroom for many reasons. Number one is because we don't have the space to provide two additional classrooms, one for each FLESS teacher, since they teach at the same time, and two, because it's only a 30-minute block, and the transition time back and forth would take away even more general instructional time. So as Dr. McCuskey had reminded me when we were answering these, that it was intentional to have the FLESS teachers move. So as soon as they get, as the classroom teacher moves, then those FLESS teachers can move, and there's minimal loss of instructional time. Pros and cons of Scenario 2. Scenario 2 is the construction of a 5th-grade wing at Hadley Junior High, plus a pre-K addition at Churchill, along with the Phase 2 construction of a Buildings and Grounds Storage Facility at Spalding. Quick summary, there were pros identified by table groups. More detail was needed. This scenario had more pros noted in this option than in others. Again, feedback represents what was submitted. There may be some inaccurate assumptions in the, you know, in the feedback, but we can correct those. Pros to this scenario is that it does solve all of our space issues. It keeps, it puts full-day kindergarten at home schools. It allows us to use Spalding, which is property that we currently own, as part of the solution. This does not require any boundary changes, this scenario. Again, because we would be moving students out, in this case, it would be 5th grade, we would have fewer students at each elementary building. So those same kind of added benefits of less traffic, improved interior circulation, reduced dependence on inadequate space, and more opportunity for flexible learning environments. This scenario 2 also avoids needing a new Student Attendance Center referendum approval. Cons that we had identified for this scenario was that it adds more students at Hadley, so it could stress core spaces such as lunchrooms and gyms, and additional class, traffic congestion at Hadley. The feedback that was generated at the last Committee of the Whole meetings, pros were that 5th grade could blend in with the 6th graders who are already sequestered. Important to emphasize 5th grade center. Many programs start in 5th grade. Brand-new Performing Arts Center at Hadley that would be available to 5th graders. Potential pro compared to Scenario 1, lower impact on administrative roles. This assumes new administrators are needed for the new pre-K center at Churchill. This seems like that it might need only one additional AP to be focused on the 5th grade center. That is yet to be determined, but that was something that one of the table groups had added. Only two versus three separate construction projects. 5th, 6th graders being developmentally and educationally similar. People felt this was a good pairing. Some of the cons that were identified is this causes three separate projects. It doesn't allow for the youngest learners to be grouped together. Traffic, as well as lesser issue, it takes away the 5th grade victory lap top dog status. Concern about interaction between 5th graders and 8th graders, is this the best scenario for students? If Buildings and Grounds is at Hadley, Buildings and Grounds would take up a lot of the green space at Hadley. Manipulation of related service staff, yes, this would require some shifting in staff. Potential increased operational costs. This solves only some of the space problems, which I would say this one is inadequate, because this was the scenario that solved all of our space challenges. Pre-K student only goes to Churchill for one year, then to homeschool the following year. This is, this is already what happens with pre-K, but yes, this would, this would continue that. Pre-K is further from central of the district. Two construction, separate construction sites happening at the same time. Putting a large storage facility in the neighborhood, I'm assuming they're referring to Spalding. It raises the Hadley population significantly. It will require extra gym, lunchroom, et cetera. Needs extreme shifting. As we had discussed last time, if this is the scenario that we want to vet out further and cost out and start to look at more specifics, part of that would be determining if this would function more as a standalone addition, where we would add additional gym space, lunchroom space, so that we weren't overtaxing Hadley, the current structure of Hadley. But that's something that, if this scenario moves forward, we would do more investigation on. Pros and cons of Scenario 3. Scenario 3 again is the construction of a new attendance center on the Spalding property with Phase 2 construction of Buildings and Grounds Storage Facility at Churchill or Hadley. Quick summary of this is there were no pros noted by any of the community groups, participants that were here. Again, feedback represents what was submitted. It may not be accurate, so we can correct that as we talk through it. So the pros of building a new attendance center on Spalding are that some of the space, solves some of the space challenges. It utilizes Spalding as part of the solution. It puts fewer students at each elementary school. All schools would experience less traffic, improved interior circulation, reduced dependence on inadequate space, and opportunities for flexible learning. Minimal construction disruption, because the construction would be taking place not on an existing campus, but on a new site. Cons were that we had a modified pre-K EC addition is still needed by building a new attendance center. We know that the Spalding property would allow for a small footprint of a school, so we would not have the space to build a school and a large pre-K center on the Spalding property. So this scenario still leaves us with needing to solve our pre-K EC addition expansion. This scenario requires boundary changes at all elementary schools. This scenario requires a referendum to obtain voter approval just to build. It's not, nothing about financing it. It's just to build the center. The physical footprint, as I said, is small. For a full K5 school, it would need to be a multi-level building. And there are definitely increased operational costs with building and operating a new attendance center. The feedback generated by the participants that night, as I said, there were no pros identified by this group. There were some additional cons identified, potential of needing to take houses for parking. The spa, I don't know how accurate that is, Eric. I don't believe that's an accurate assumption that we would be, would have to do that. Okay. The space is so small that everything would be very tight. It would be a small, smaller footprint. It would have to be a multiple-story building. People move to be within certain boundaries, so they would be upset with the boundary changes. I think that's an accurate statement. Boundary changes are never easy to do in any community. This does not, this scenario does not solve our pre-K issues, and there is no room for growth on the site. So again, that's the feedback. Ask if the board has any questions, and then we can, you know, extend an opportunity for questions from the community.
Thank you. Melissa, board, any questions or comments from?
Board, any questions or comments from the summary that Melissa has presented? Seeing track with what you experienced during the first meeting? Yeah? Yeah, please Jess, go ahead.
For scenario one, it says it solves most of our space problems, which space problem does it not solve?
Um, let's see. Home school. Eric, do you remember when we talked through this one? We didn't put that in here, but...
I think it was just generally addressing the fact that if we have any increase in enrollment, there's no extra space, we'd basically gain, you know, we'd pull out those current kindergarten classrooms and that would be the only space we'd gain, so it'd still be kind of tight. I think that was the thinking there.
Are there fewer kindergarten classrooms than there are fifth-grade classrooms?
I think they're the same number.
A couple fewer, but we could check on that.
So it'd kind of be the same between scenario one and scenario two?
No, it actually, there's half as many kindergarten classes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So that's why, so pulling the kindergarten out only gives you about half the classrooms?
Yeah.
And I guess that was my other question, this seems to assume that you would replace and double all of the classrooms at the new facility for kindergarten, rather than have some kindergartners stay?
Yes.
At homeschool.
Yes.
So you'd really double your footprint.
Yeah, we would not be leaving any kindergartens back at the homeschool. We wouldn't anticipate that there would be a sufficient number of people who wanted half-day if we were able to offer full day, that there would be a need to keep kindergarten classrooms at a homeschool, you know, districts that have done this, there's a way to accommodate people who only want half-day and we absolutely are required to do that, but typically it doesn't generate enough people who want half-day to maintain a half-day classroom, you just incorporate that in your structure for the day. And the half-day kids, the people who want half-day leave at half-day, but they're in classes with the full-day students.
Okay. So basically, besides the what of scenario one and two, the kind of the main difference between them is that you get more students out of the homeschools with the moving to the third grade?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was mine. And I have a few corrections, I think I sent those to you though, so I don't know if we need to discuss them.
Yeah. You know, one of the corrections was that it doesn't have fewer kids at each school, but whether we move kindergarten out or fifth grade, you know, not taking into consideration growth, we would be moving kids out of the building, whether it's kindergarten or whether it's fifth grade, so we would have fewer students. But again, that's not incorporating growth in terms of B or C, you know, then we wouldn't have to account for that, but we would have the ability then to open up new sections at grade levels. Fewer new sections if we moved kindergarten out, more if we moved fifth grade out, but we would have some ability in scenario one or scenario two to open new sections to accommodate growth.
Yeah. I think my main point was that if you doubled, if you doubled the number, you would double the number of kindergartners, so it'd be slightly less, but not like in if you moved the fifth grade out, you'd still double.
Yes.
It wouldn't be a one-to-one.
No, you're still, there's a greater impact by moving fifth grade out than there is from moving kindergarten out.
And scenario two, the two other corrections are that it's one of the feedbacks for the pros is this says only two versus three separate projects, but it is still three separate projects because it's Hadley, it's Churchill, and it's the Spalding.
Yes.
And then the cons, there's a bullet here that says if Buildings and Grounds at Hadley, Buildings and Grounds would take up a lot of the green space at Hadley, but that's not what's being proposed in scenario two, so that really is a bullet that belongs to scenario three.
Yes.
That's it. You noted the others.
Thank you, Jess. Anyone else? No? You're good? All right, well, let's take a minute, this is an opportunity for those of you who are in attendance, you've heard some commentary both on the projection for student enrollment, and we've summarized the work of the first committee of the whole, and then looking at the feedback that we got from all of you. So here's an opportunity for you, and you can stay at your seat. This isn't public comment on any topic or a need to go up to the podium, this is if you wanted to comment or ask a question particularly to the district that we can consider, get information on, so it's an opportunity for you to do, to provide some feedback, we just don't have you in small groups. All right, so Kelly, yes, please, but speak up, but yeah.
I think I have a lot. Couple of questions, one of the things that I had seen was said on scenario two, that is, I think in my mind, and we don't have an answer to it though, is if we were to move fifth grade to Hadley, what would the fifth grade curriculum look like? Would they hear the six through eight curriculum where they have a different teacher for every eighth period? Or would they maintain an elementary school type curriculum?
Yes.
And if that decision is made?
Yes. In our planning and thinking so far is we would, fifth grade would follow traditional fifth grade curriculum, so it would look like, very much like what they have now. Now granted, they have access to some spaces and things that they don't have currently at elementary, so, but we would not see putting fifth grade on a traditional middle school schedule their day because it would be a self-contained addition. It would look like fifth grade, you know, and so fifth grade staff from the buildings would follow them, and they would follow much more of a typical fifth grade schedule, just on a different campus.
Did you have another question?
I have a follow-up question.
Let me just first of all see if anyone else has a, Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, I'm wondering with Dr. Caserta's report, if any of that is Series B, that seems the most projected, which typically with his reports is always Series B in the past. How has that, if it has informed any of this conversation by looking at those numbers?
Right. Well, our starting point even without reviewing the Caserta, we knew, you know, going into this, that even without social distancing, which has just made it harder because we've had to push into spaces that typically wouldn't be used for instruction we've had to use. So that's made it much harder to do pull-out groups and things like that, but it's also made it very, very difficult to find space for staff. Now take that all off the table, and we knew even prior to COVID, we had very little ability to open new sections because all of our classrooms were being used. We didn't have new sections, and then when social distancing became our reality, that was a huge struggle. So even with no growth or minimal growth, we know that we have minimal ability at the elementary building to absorb growth and not have class sizes go up. We just don't have classrooms to split sections and keep those numbers down. So Caserta, to me, it's good information to have on hand, you know, two out of the three scenarios show growth. In my mind, it's important, but what to me is most important was knowing our reality even before COVID hit, was that we have minimal ability to control class sizes because we can't split sections. So, you know, kids never move in at the grade levels where you have room for them, they always tend to move in at the grade levels that are already overcrowded, but you can't predict that, you know, so yes, we could absorb a few move-ins depending on the grade level, but anywhere where it would put us above class-size guidelines, we know we don't have the ability to split sections anymore. We know that right now, even with taking art and music classrooms and having them be on a cart, we're full. So if we went and gave them back their classroom space, that just adds to it. We could keep them on a cart, but that doesn't solve the issue of, you know, the need to keep class sizes lower, and it certainly doesn't allow us to do anything with full-day kindergarten. So, you know, Caserta is just kind of an additional piece of information for me on top of the reality we were already living in.
So I think you just, I'm hearing you say at least, is that it reinforces current state and projects it to be that next reality?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Please.
When will the Caserta report be posted, the P-41?
We can post it.
So it's there.
And I have two other questions.
Before you ask, let me just make sure nobody else has, and then we'll definitely come back to you. Dr. Ward?
Last time we talked about in the beginning, that there was 1,400 more kids in this district up here than in the South District.
Katie, no.
Why wouldn't we have that as an option? We, and all the boundaries and stuff like that, but it tends to me that why wouldn't we look at that, putting some kids where we already have space rather than building and shifting and doing this? And I know the answer is, then you have to read that through, why, I mean, in the state of Illinois, we have more districts than we have in the state and country, why wouldn't we try to consolidate?
Okay.
Take some space up that's there and maybe save a little bit of money and time?
Thank you.
It is extremely complicated, it's not just a school district alone. I think if you were to talk to any communities that have tried to do consolidation, I know some that have been in the courts and involved in the process for years, so there's so many implications of, you know, trying to merge two school districts and you have to, the school district that has, you know, there's multiple variables. One would be that the district with the lower salary schedule has to boost up to the higher salary schedule. There's just financial impacts to both districts, which is why I believe you don't see it happen very often. And I don't think that the other district that you're referencing in Glen Ellen would say that they have free space. They've been able to, and I don't mean free as in money, but that they have available space, they just don't live under the same space constraints that we do. They've been able to navigate a lot of things through COVID that we couldn't do just because they aren't as overcrowded, but I don't know that they would say that they have room to take on 1,500 of our students. I know that they wouldn't, you know, or even half of that. So, you know, I think that's, you know, there's a lot of information about consolidation and I've never seen it be a fast or even a successful endeavor for communities to engage in, but it's something that kind of bubbles up from the community and not necessarily the two districts, but you're absolutely right, it's very...
A lot of, you know, moving parts too. And I think that that maybe should be part of the study. It's not, you know.
Thank you, thank you. Someone else before we circle back? Well, let me circle back to Kelly and then convert a paper.
So this, and this is probably something, it's just on my head, and it's about the Caserta study and the impact of Ben Franklin in scenario B. And if we were to move either in scenario one or two, I think our net gain of classrooms in both buildings is only two, because, or half, because if you move kindergarten, leave kindergarten and move fifth grade out, kindergarten doubles in size. So they've now taken half of the fifth grade classrooms that we've sent away, whereas scenario one, if we move half-day kindergarten out, we clear out just the kindergarten classrooms. So I think they're almost the same net result, but I guess my question is, is with the Caserta study, it looks like Ben Franklin potentially had the largest impact. My question is, is do any of these scenarios put us in a good position to absorb that growth in Ben Franklin long-term? Because I don't know if it does.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Right, well, and I...
And that's just kind of me guesstimating really quickly in my head.
Right.
But the Caserta, when looking at that growth, is like, will this even get us? I don't know.
Well, and I think the reality of what, you know, if you look at financial forecasting and, you know, while Caserta sees B as our most likely scenario, just overall, I don't know that the economy is going to be booming, you know what I mean? So to anticipate scenario C and a really aggressive growth also doesn't seem to be consistent with what the financial forecasting is saying is going to happen within the community. And, you know, that's not to say that down the road, some boundaries might not need to be adjusted. If growth does overly impact one building versus another, the district has no choice but to look at that. If we start to see that trending in our enrollment numbers, definitely have to look at that.
So I think we just want to be careful in claiming that doing this means there will not be any boundary changes, because we don't know what's going to happen five, four, three, two, one.
Right.
And my follow-up statement to that, and then I think I've got all my questions or statements mentioned, is class size goals, you know, I want to also make sure that as we're talking through this, that we are looking at what optimal class size is, and not what class size is today because this is the scenario that we're in. So I don't want us to create a solution to meet the needs for today and maybe a little bit of growth, I want to make sure that we're making a decision for what is optimal five and 10 years from now, so that we're not in this room again.
Absolutely.
That's a good, that's a great point.
A priority of the conversation that we have is to scale this to really solve the problems. This was just a first, you know, dipping our toes in to put some concrete things in front of the community and start to get feedback. One of the things that the board will be discussing tonight and hearing a presentation on is a really, really aggressive community engagement approach, so that we can gauge how important is all of that, because, you know, to some, class size is a big deal, to others, not as much. People would rather see a more conservative, some would rather see more conservative approach to construction, some would rather see a very aggressive approach to keeping class sizes down, but right now, we're operating on guesses. You know, with the minimal surveys that we've done, you know, before we could land on anything, I believe we need a really aggressive opportunity for the community to really weigh in and say what they want, both long-term and short-term. So I agree with you. I don't think anybody here wants to do this and have an alpumby that we truly don't solve the issues.
Can I just respond to that? Kelly, I'm glad you really underscored the point, because I think the weight of the educational research on the effects that doing certain things have on student performance and student well-being suggests that, or strongly demonstrates that pre-K and full-day kindergarten are two powerful forces, impacted probably the most impactful on student learning. And the second is, if you can get your class size numbers down considerably, you really then move the needle. Yeah, and that has even greater effects for students who may be performing slightly below the median, or have struggled to perform as well as maybe the overall district average. So I appreciate you commenting on class size. You got it. Oh, go ahead, your point, yeah.
I was going to say, and I had asked about the class target, but I do have another question regarding scenario one and two, and I guess to a lesser extent, three, but I think it's well-known that some teachers do follow principals to different schools, principal or assistant principal will, you know, takes an open position. Teachers have been known to jockey around to work under someone they're really with. You're talking about in scenario one and two, taking three kindergarten teachers from each school or four to five fifth-grade teachers, and moving those to work under somebody different. Has this been discussed with Pia or any of the teachers to just kind of get an idea of their feeling about that?
They're aware of the scenarios and I think, you know, most employees recognize that the district can place you where you need to. I mean, that's not saying it very eloquently, but it's a reality. I mean, I taught for years and you get moved where they need you to go, and so I, you know, it's not come up as an issue, let's put it that way. I think, I think people want the space challenges solved and they know that there's some movement in all of these options. So no, you know, as we've shared these scenarios, that's not been a concern that's been brought up. That's not to say that it won't be, particularly, you know, when you see projects like this through, sometimes the closer it gets, that's when those kind of things come up, but it's not been... But it's not been brought up as a concern at this point by anybody.
Okay.
And I think you plan for that, you know, particularly if a scenario where you're going to open a new attendance center. I've been in districts that have opened new buildings aggressively because growth was exploding. And you always want to move a nice balance of earlier career people, but also have some anchors and some veterans there. So there is a strategy, you know, if that was an option that, you know, got vetted out, that seemed to be very favorable. There are strategies for how to open a new building so that you don't end up with all brand-new staff in that building. You know, but, but the concern of having to have some movement or work under a different administrative team hasn't come up.
Thank you. Good questions, good questions. All right, don't see anything else in the community? Up there, board, any last thoughts before we invite our guest to talk about community engagement? Jason, please.
One question I have is that, one difference in moving kindergarten to, kindergarten or fifth grade to, sorry, fifth grade to Hadley or, as opposed to moving kindergarten out to a different building, is that obviously you're having fifth-grade teachers move to Hadley. What are the endorsements like? How does it correlate, say, where in time, like, but we're in now, where you have staff shortages for whatever reasons? Do, what are the endorsements like for that? How does that correlate for, is it, are endorsements five through eight now, if I'm correct, or six through eight?
Really where it gets, it's trickier at middle school. So moving fifth grade to fifth-grade state as a self-contained fifth-grade addition, licensure is a non-issue, you know? And if kindergarten was moved to an early learning center, that as well. So its licensure is much broader at the elementary level than it is at middle school. But we, we wouldn't be putting fifth grade, you know, it would be a self-contained fifth-grade addition. So we wouldn't run into any licensing issues for staff. We'd be changing their physical space.
Right. I didn't know if there was a correlation, because I thought that there were some changes with that, where middle school endorsement started with fifth grade now, and it would kind of, where my point, if you have staff at one building, their endorsements would be across the board at that, throughout that building.
Yeah. Fifth grade, I mean, the elementary level, they don't have to have their content endorsement the way middle school. So, but we would not, either of these scenarios would not create any licensure issues for us.
Good question from the board member with a law degree worrying about licensing endorsements. Very good, okay. I want to make sure that everyone has had a chance. Angela, anything? No, Dave, we're good. Okay, then Melissa, why don't you please introduce our guest?
Okay, tonight we have with us representing EO Sullivan Consulting Company. Colin Corbett has joined us and he is going to present to the board and share what a community engagement consultant service could provide to the board and to the community. Welcome, Colin.
Great, there we go. Thank you very much for having me. As was mentioned, I'm here on behalf of EO Sullivan. My business partner, Ed Sullivan, and I work together. You'll see there's two company names up there on the screen. My company is actually Core Strategies. Ed's company is EO Sullivan Consulting. We work together in this process. The reason why we have that two-company strategy and that two-company approach is that transparency for us is key. It's really important as you go through this process that you're as transparent with the public as you possibly can. And one of the ways that we make sure that we do that is showing where the funds are being spent. Any funds spent on a community engagement process all go, they're coming from the school district, they all go to EO Sullivan. Any work that happens post-board vote, that gets done through a separate company. That way, it's clear that the district is not spending any money on any process other than what you need to do as a school district. So that's why there's two companies that are listed. I'm here representing EO Sullivan and we'll walk through what EO Sullivan can do for your school district. We believe in community, bringing a community together. That's what our approach is, that's what our focus is. And so we've developed a community engagement process that helps bring a community and their unit of government together. I've been around in doing politics in Illinois for 16 years, working in communities all throughout the state and helping bring communities together. And my business partner, Ed Sullivan, he does the same. He was a legislator down in Springfield for a long time and also an assessor in his hometownship of Fremont Township. So we have a long history of working to drive consensus in communities and amongst groups. And that's what we try to do with our clients here when we do community engagement. The idea is to have a community-driven process so that it's the community that is driving this and determining which direction that we go. And that's the key phrase for us is "community-driven." It's all about gathering information from the public and having them help drive this process. And that's a key difference because when we started getting involved, my homeschool district put a referendum on the ballot and did nothing to gather community engagement, nothing to gather feedback, nothing to work with the community on what the plan should be. And even if they should actually even pursue a plan that required a referendum, they did none of that work. And the referendum, of course, went up in flames. There's a reason for that, because they did nothing to engage the public to figure out, is this actually the right path forward? And so that's where this idea was developed, was based on how do we work with the community to develop a plan that's a community-driven plan forward for a school district? We're a couple of slides behind, if you can, there we go. Next slide. And so that's, that's the key here, is it's about, if the plan is developed by members of the community, then they're going to accept that plan and support that plan because it's their plan. And so using information from you all as a school district, from your experts that you work with, to gather data, we're of the belief that when you present that data and that information to the public, they're going to arrive at the same conclusions as you all did, because they're going to have that information just like you did in order to make those decisions. And so how do we get that information out to the public? How do we inform them of the options that are available, why there are needs, what the challenges are? And we're, we're of the strong belief, and we now have several years of history proving, that when you do that, the community arrives at the exact same conclusion that you do. Because the data is the same, the information is the same. And so our process is a three-step process. A lot of the work that you guys have done so far is that first step, their preparation. So I'll walk through that really briefly. But that's a lot of the work that a school district will do before we will come in. That's doing facility studies, that's doing, looking at your projection for your enrollment, which of course you guys all talked about previously in this meeting. A lot of that work is what we will build off in this process. For some of that, if it's not done, then we'll step in and we'll certainly assist with it. But a lot of that work is typically done by the partners of the school district prior to when we get engaged. And so if you could go to the next slide, you'll see what some of those items are listed. A lot of this you guys have already gone through. We'll, of course, review it with you and make sure we've got the information we need for a full community engagement process. The next step on the next slide is that community engagement. We've developed a four-phase process, all again with the idea of gathering as much feedback from the public as humanly possible. Generally, when we do this process, we have over 1,000 feedback points from the public that help drive this process. That's tremendous levels of data that your public is providing you, saying, here are the things that we want to see, here are the things that aren't a priority to us, here's where we would be comfortable. All of that helps you in making decisions as you figure out what's the next step and what are the next steps even after that. And so you'll see there are some of the items that we'll engage as part of this process. And I'll talk through some of the important things. I don't want to take too much of your time, though of course, I'll happily answer questions. But I want to hit on the highlights of kind of how we go through this process and what's important to it. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk about, there are three ways that we collect data in this process. And there's an important reason for it. I'm going to walk you through each of those. But it's important that we keep these data points separate, and I'll explain why in a second. That first group, the intuitive group, this is your intuitive opinions, this is just snap decisions that people make. Unfortunately, as we've learned and as we've dealt with in our field, most people make decisions in that level. They don't, we think people weigh the pros and cons, they investigate, they research. That's not how most of us make decisions. We make decisions based on our gut and our immediate, just how we feel about that thing. And so it's important that when you're gathering information in a process like this, you identify what are those intuitive responses from members of the public? That's with limited information, just how do they feel based on their initial reaction on those things that you're trying to gather data? And so the easiest way and the most effective way to do that is through phone surveys. And so we'll, there's a few other ways that we will go about gathering that data. But the main one is we'll do several phone surveys in this process where we give them a little bit of information. We don't want them to come in that cold with no information. But really, we're not giving them a length of time after that information to think, to ruminate, to decide what their questions might be. It's right away, hey, what do you think about this? That's intuitive. The second group is that informed group. This is where you give people that extra time and you want to get, have them ask questions. You want to give them more information. You want to engage them over a longer period of time. That's that second group of data we call the informed group. And the reason why you gather that separately is now we, as we're looking at this data, can identify how do opinions change as people get more information, as they get more engaged and more, identify more things that maybe they wanted to know or things that were more important. And you see a lot of times in this data that people's opinions will change over time based on as they get more information. That's really helpful to know on how people feel immediately versus how do they feel after they've had time to think about it and be more engaged and more educated on the issues. The third group is the passion portion of this. It's important to gather information on those who are the most passionate, people who would show up. Actually, I'm sorry, I overlooked the thing. On number two, uninformed, the number one way we gather that information is through a committee. Similar to something like you've done so far with facilities committees and other groups, we would develop a community committee that we would meet with regularly throughout all the phases of this process. And so they'd get a lot of information, we'd sit for several hours each time, really dive into things. That's how we would gather that informed opinion. Moving to that third group, the passionate group. This is, the people that feel the most passionate about something are the ones who are most likely to show up to a public engagement session, to go on the website, to fill out information. And we want to capture that information for a lot of reasons, the most being that the ones who are the most passionate are oftentimes going to drive opinion of those around them. And so you want to know who are those people who are the most passionate and how do they feel about things? You're going to have people who are most passionate on this side and that side of everything. And so it's important to gather their thoughts and their feedback. But you also want to make sure that no one has a larger voice than anyone else. And that's why we separate each of these three groups, and we do that intentionally, because we don't want to have a situation where we're only gathering data from parents or we're only gathering data from those who are maybe the most vocal at a school board meeting. We want to make sure that everyone in your community is represented and represented fairly and equally. And so that's why we separate this data out the way that we do. We're able to then present to you and say, this is scientifically an accurate representation of your district, but you also need to note, there's a lot of passion on this issue, or there's a lot of passion against this thing over here. It allows us to give you both of those things, rather than have a situation where maybe one subset is overrepresented. We don't want to have a situation where, let's say, we have seniors overrepresented or females over males or, you know, any demographic that we will wait for. It's important that everyone is accurately represented within the work that we do. So that's how we go through and gather our data. Now I'm going to walk you through the four-phase process that we have. The general idea is to picture this like a funnel. Picture it as more broad at the top and we get narrower and narrower and narrower as we go along. And so phase one is very broad. The idea is to gather information from the public generally about how they feel about the school district, how do they feel about the schools themselves, what are the challenges that they see, what are the opportunities? It's important for us to gather that information for a number of reasons, because it also helps start this process. It gets people in the door. We really want them to feel comfortable with engaging with us and engaging with you all. So that's what phase one is, and you'll see some of the steps that we take in order to go through this phase. One of the important things I want to note, there is that fourth bullet. It's important that you engage those people who are already leaders in the community. And so part of this process that we will do is we'll go to those people who are already active, leaders in the community, elected officials, mayors, community leaders. We'll go to them and try to make sure that they're aware of what's going on and actively try to engage them in this process as well, not simply because they're busy. So if we expect them to come to us to show up at a meeting, they probably won't. And so part of this process is we'll go specifically to certain community groups to make sure we're actively gathering their, their feedback as well. Phase two, this is where we take, you know, we now start to hone it in a little bit, but it still is very broad. Here, we're creating what we call a menu. And this is one of the main keys of our process, is breaking it up into what we call the menu of individual projects, infrastructure solutions, funding levels, funding options. We break this up into these various categories. And the reason why we do that is it allows us to identify what are those community priorities for the members of your community? Just looking, listening to the previous presentations, you heard a lot, I saw a lot in there of, you know, one option might require boundary changes, one option might not. You know, one option has, you know, gives you more of this versus less of that. You know, in this process, as we're able to break down those items into individual projects, we can then get feedback from the public on how important is it to have X over Y? You know, maybe it's really important for them that they don't want to see boundary changes touched at all, and they'd be willing to sacrifice something over here as long as it meant, don't change my boundaries. We've dealt with boundary changes with school districts, so I don't mean to harp on that, but it's something we have dealt with in the past. And it's important to allow people to give you that feedback on, maybe they think, you know what? I'd rather have boundary changes if it means I also get blank. So we are, by breaking it up into each of those individual categories, it allows us to present to you data to say, you know what, as you're customizing this final plan based on the community's feedback, here are the three or four or five things that they say are really high priority. And here are the remaining things that they say are less priority. And some of those, they may say, we don't want that at all, don't touch that. And so we're able to provide you that feedback on that individual project level, rather than, as we saw before, you had those three options. And we want to break it down before we get to those option points to the public, because there may be things within there that maybe if we went to the public and said, hey, do you like option one? And they all say, no, we hate it, well, we don't know why. Like, what is the item or multiple items within there that was the reason they didn't like option one? Or if they loved it, what were the items within there that they really liked? And so by breaking it up into this menu, it lets us gather these feedback points on each individual item rather than the whole, the group as a whole. Also within that, we'll talk about infrastructure solutions. And so we'll say, would you rather see, let's say, again, I'm making this up, it's not related to what you guys are looking at, but maybe you'd rather see repairs done or maybe you'd like to see additions done, or maybe you'd like to see new construction? Generally speaking, which would you prefer? Knowing that obviously the further you move along, that the more expensive it might be. What would you think would be a priority to you as a member of the public? It allows us to present to you again, an idea of where's, where's the public's head at? Do they want to see new? Or would they like to see, you know what, let's spend a little less and let's just repair what we have? Another thing that we'll test in that menu is funding levels. And so we say, you know what, based on a certain level of cost, here's a low, here's a medium, here's a high. Again, we generally customize that, so we'll work with you to figure out what those numbers might be. Sometimes it's more than three options. Again, we'll work with your district experts to figure out what options to present. But then we make it real for the public. We say, based on this amount, here's the impact on your property taxes. Based on this amount, here's the impact on your property taxes. And we get that feedback again on how do you feel at different levels as a member of the public and which is, where are you the most comfortable? And so all this data, it's broad, but it allows us, allows us to present you that information where you can start to hone in now on what of those final plans you do potentially want to present to the public. That leads us to phase three. Here in phase three, we arrive at three options. Now, it might be the three options you already have identified. More than likely, there'll be some changes as you get feedback from the public on which, what are the most important? Maybe drop-off is such a frustration for them that no matter what you do, they want to see drop-off fixed. Again, making it up, because I don't know what to face. But you're going to get some feedback from the public on things that no matter what you do, we must have blank. I don't care what else you give us. And then you're going to get feedback on some things that they say, hey, we really don't want this. It will allow you to customize those final plans based on what the public is most in favor of. There will be items in there. Listen, let's, let's be honest, the public is not the experts on these things as you all are, the people that you hire. And so there'll be items within there that you say, you know what, I understand the public's reticence on this item, however, it's something we have to do. And you'll be able to identify those items and we could go to the public and say, hey, listen, here's why this might be something that you should reconsider. But that's where we're, by having the data broken up by those who are more informed on different issues versus the intuitive opinions, we can see, as they're more informed on why X is a need, does their opinion change? Do they get more on board with that item? If so, that informs you all as a school district that, you know what, we can move forward with this plan that includes that thing. But we need six months or 12 months to engage the community, to make sure we educate them on why that thing is something we don't have a choice, we have to do whatever that thing is. Again, this is where by breaking up the data the way that we do, we can give you that feedback and that guidance as you move forward into future steps. So here in phase three, again, we'll have three options that we present to the public. It'll likely be very similar to the three options you have, but it will be customized based on the community's feedback in phase one and phase two. We then, just like all the other phases, we bring forward to the community, we give them their opportunity to provide us feedback on which of those three final options they would pursue, that they would prefer. In some cases, they choose one overwhelmingly over the other two. In some cases, there's a tie or there's a little bit of uncertainty. But the good news is, because of the data we have from phases one and two, we can identify why. Let's say, just randomly, I'll say, options one and two were really popular, option three was not. So we know, cut out option three, it's really between one and two. Well, why is one popular, why is two popular? Would we go back to the data from phase two and we identify, well, option one was really popular because people really like this, this, and this. Option two was really popular because people really like this, this, and this. Is there a way to create a final option that brings the best of both of those worlds together? And the easier scenario, which is most often what happens, the public picks one option, they love it, you're done. You know exactly what the public wanted. But in either case, it allows you to drive into phase four with a final plan that the public has supported, that the public has given you their input on what they wanted to see in that final plan. Once you have that information, we then are able to put it out to the public, make sure they see exactly what that plan is, that they were a major part in developing. If that question does require. If that question does require a referendum, then obviously we would assist you in moving forward in that process. If that option does not require a referendum, then yay, we're excited for you and we wouldn't have to help you in that process. But either way, we would walk you through the entire process from start to finish, and that's the community engagement process. I'll be much more brief in the last few things I'll cover, but as we move forward, there are a few things to keep in mind. After the board votes on what your final plan is and decide how you want to move forward, there's a few things that could happen. Number one, if a referendum was required, you would then obviously need to make sure that that referendum moved forward and went through the entire process. There are certain things that you all as a board and as a district can and cannot do during that process. We help you make sure you know what you can do, what you shouldn't do, and that's where this community education program comes in. And so we'll move to the next slide as we talk about what would be included in that. You want to make sure the public knows what's on their ballot, again, if you had to move forward with some sort of a referendum. And so what we would help you do is educate the public on why, what the path was that got us here, why this is the final plan, how the public collaborated on this consensus plan, and then you leave it up to them to decide the referendum's fate. It's successful, and our process has proven that it is successful, because again, you have this entire transparent collaborative process that leads to a plan that's their plan. So if it's on their ballot and they helped to develop the plan, it's going to pass. Again, you may not end up with a plan that ends up with a referendum, and that's excellent. But I just want you to know how that process would look if it did end up that way. My company and E.O. Sullivan would help walk you through all the way from start to finish. I believe that's the end, but let me make sure. Yes, that's the end of the presentation. I'm sure there's questions. I tried to not go into too much detail because I can nerd out on this stuff a little bit. So, but if there's something you'd like me to dig into more, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, Colin, thank you very much for the presentation at times. So let me, that looks like Jason.
So I just want to make, just kind of dumb it down even further, just to make sure that I'm on the right track. So basically, the thought process that you're presenting is work with the board of the district to identify needs, and then work with the community to identify and develop ways to address those needs that are best supported by the community.
Yeah, that's accurate. Okay. The idea is, I think that second slide, the key is, it's a more community-focused approach than a district-focused approach, even though we're utilizing the experts you all have and using all the information you've gathered and everything that all the data your experts have provided, we're then going to take that and put it out to the public and have them lead this process and guide us along the way. And so I think that would be the only thing that I would really emphasize in that point. But yes, it's taking this information, putting it out to the public, and letting them drive that process so we can arrive at a final plan. And you guys are part of that. I mean, obviously, at each step of this, you all are going to be determining, you know, what moves to that extent based on the feedback. You're still elected leaders of the district, but ultimately, we're going to equip you with that information so you can make informed opinions or decisions.
Thanks.
What's the general timeline on a process like that?
Yeah, generally, it takes about four to six months. Now, all that is related to where you are in the calendar. Obviously, as you guys move into, I think your school year would end in May, I believe. So some of that will impact what the timeline would be, and certainly COVID also has an impact. Just so you're aware, we've run this process pre-COVID and during COVID, so we're well used to how we handle this throughout the course of a pandemic. So some things are done remotely and virtually, some things are done in person, there's hybrid options. As the direction from health officials changes, so does our process. And so we can run this at the height of the pandemic. We actually saw even higher engagement when the pandemic hit than we'd ever seen before. And then obviously, hopefully, as the pandemic subsides or as the latest variant subsides, we can get people more in person. But either way, we can run through this process no matter what.
Other questions? Julie, please.
Hi. How often do you guys run these projects similar to this with school districts? Like, how many, I would say, how would you, how many would you say, like, per year of these school district kind of projects do you guys do?
We're at about seven or eight per year, I would say. We've been doing this for three, four years in Illinois now. There are some companies that were doing it outside of the state that were doing this work in Illinois, there was nobody local, and that's where we came up with the idea to do something here locally. And so we've been doing it now since 20, I believe, 2018 in the state of Illinois. And I think we've run up to 20 of them at this point, and we've driven towards successful outcomes in all but one of them. So we're, we almost have a perfect record.
Okay, so by the successful outcome, you mean to the point where maybe it gets to whether or not you have to continue to a referendum? Like, because you kind of presented it, in my understanding, was like in two blocks? Like, we have to get you to either, whether or not you need a referendum, that was sort of the end of the first block, right? I mean, I know you had like three different steps, but like in the, and you have to get to whether or not you need a referendum first, right? So is that your point of success, that you're saying like seven, seven out of eight of those maybe?
Yeah, so ultimately, we're going to drive towards a final consensus plan.
Right.
And then from there, it determines what you guys decide as the Board of Education, our next steps. Some school districts do move forward with a referendum, some school districts decide to piece it up and do it over time. The one school district that wasn't successful, unfortunately, they didn't follow our advice and they didn't follow the data. We said, don't move forward, and they did, and they went to referendum and it failed. And so we're going to give you that advice on what you should do as next steps, but ultimately, you all will decide kind of how you utilize that data. But ultimately, our, to us, success is driving towards a final plan that's a consensus plan that the public can support. As to what you do with that, again, some districts need to go to referendum, but we've had clients where we work on boundary changes or work on other things that don't ever require a referendum, but the unit of government, because we've worked with community colleges, we've worked with local governments, and they just want to have a plan that they know their public has been engaged on and that their public supports. And so ultimately, that's our end goal, is a plan that the public is, is their plan that's a community-driven plan. That's what we consider that success.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. How about over here? Any questions on this side of the room?
Oh.
Jess?
So when you do the phone surveys, since you do this seven or eight times a year, is that like you have a standard set of questions? Is that something that you iterate with the district, or how does that all work?
Yeah, it's all custom. So our entire plan, we have a process, but it's all customized around each district's needs. So we would customize that script for that phone survey, and then of course, everything we do will be working directly with the district. So, but it will all be based on that menu, and so as we work together, we'll develop a menu of what the individual projects are, what the funding options, funding levels, infrastructure solutions, all of that will be developed well before the point where we get to a survey. And so ultimately, we're simply pulling from that and putting it in a phone survey, just like we're pulling from that as a presentation for a public engagement session, or we're pulling from that for a community committee meeting. It's all going to be based on that same foundation, so it's all consistent, because ultimately, if we're asking different questions of each of those three groups, we can't compare the data. So it's all consistent based on that menu.
And the public engagement sessions, is that like a focus group or what does that entail?
Those are open to any member of the public that wishes to attend, because we want, we want people to be engaged, we want them to come out. So the community committee is more closed. That's where we work to develop a cross-section of the community. We want people who are parents, we want people who are parents of children who previously went through the schools but are done with the schools, because they tend to not necessarily want to see as many changes. We want seniors, we want business leaders, we want local leaders, we want people who have no ties to the district. Now, that community committee is intentionally more closed. The public engagement sessions is wide open. We're going to push out information and get as many people to show up to that as possible, because we want people to give their feedback and we want to have them attend. So those are more open.
And you make a good point that we need to get participation from all sorts of groups, a diverse set. How do you ensure that there's participation from groups that might have barriers to participation typically?
Yeah, and that's where the three data tracks are so important, because you're going to look at the people who show up to a public engagement session as, any barriers in your way, you're going to overcome those barriers because you want to have your voice heard, and that's why that's the passion group. But the phone survey isn't intentionally, there's no barriers. We're going to call you, we're going to let you know it's coming, we're going to provide it depending on what your needs are in your district, we've provided that in different languages, we've made it available for people to take in different ways. The idea is we want no barriers, we don't want any barriers anywhere, but the idea is for that survey especially, we want to get as much feedback as possible from any member of the public. But also you have, on the website, there'll be a portal for people to be able to fill things out of the website. Really, if you want to get feedback, there will be numerous opportunities for you to do so. And so we've found that there really isn't barriers in the way of people getting, being able to give that feedback in one form or another. Anyone else?
Colin, I do have a, well, question slash comment. I know you've got a longer-standing relationship with District 200, and you're recently engaged with District 89, our neighbors, our neighbors in Glen Ellen. Fair to say, you know, and I don't know beyond that, other districts that you've worked with in this area, but you, you do bring, I think, or you will bring a level of familiarity with the communities surrounding us.
Yes.
So any other districts out this way, you know, that would be helpful for our board to know that you've worked with, or, you know, as I said, I'm aware of the two, any others that you want to talk about?
Yeah, we've worked with a number of school districts, a number of units of government all throughout the area. You mentioned several in the area. I know we worked with, again, it's going to be, you know, around the area, but we worked with, I'm blanking on the name of it. I apologize.
That's okay. You've been in DuPage County, though.
Yes, we've done, we've done five or six in this area. I'm just blanking on the name of the school district.
Not a problem. Unfair, I didn't.
We usually have, actually, we have a whole slide presentation that we usually include at the beginning that lists a bunch of them, but unfortunately, it's very, like, a lot of them, it's hard to show success unless it ends in a referendum. And so we didn't want to overemphasize referendum, because this might not end at a referendum. So we made the decision to pull those slides out, and obviously, it would have been helpful for you to see those districts. But I know we work with Berkeley, we work with Elmwood Park, we work with Itasca, there's a number of others in this area that I'm blanking on, but we've definitely worked in this region on this project. And then the reason I mention my background is I've been doing work like this throughout the state of Illinois for a decade and a half. And so whether it's working with elected officials, working with units of government at the county level, the township level, the local level, we know this area very, very well. And I think it's one of the reasons why we've had a lot of success is there are other companies who kind of do what we do, but they're based in Wisconsin or Washington or other states. This is our hometown, this, we know this area very, very well. It helps as we're looking at feedback, as we're talking to people, we kind of know how they think. It makes it easier to present you information, knowing that, you know, there are people just like us.
Okay. So you guys are physically present for, is, for some of these events, as you said, pandemic permitting?
Yeah, we're at your side in this whole process. So whether it's, you know, these, these community committee meetings, we're helping you run those, these public engagement sessions, we're helping run it, we obviously run the surveys, we'll be making reports to you all as the board as each phase concludes. As you guys have questions, we're answering those questions. Yes, we're with you here, physically present, or as COVID may be virtually present as much as needed to make sure that we drive to a successful outcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Colin, one question. As you go through your groups and you funnel down this reverted, inverted pyramid, is the communication that begins through the phone surveys to just get a quick intuitive feel, is that done anonymously?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I assume that that was the case, but at that second stage or that second group where you're providing more information, what you call the informed group, and you then talked about a look back to why some, why the community might feel exasperated, is there any, is there any way, how do you, how do you know that the information that's been provided as people get more information, it goes beyond their immediate feel, that that's mediating against how they feel and they change how they feel? They go from, oh, boy, I just didn't really think too good about this project, oh, I've now seen A, B, C, and D, and if you went back to those people, they would say, oh, now I'm far more supportive. Is there, is there a way that this process can, can reach back to, to move people, to educate people, and it then provides information to the district that people were at point A when they believed this, but now they're at point B as they've gotten more information? Does this process allow for that since it's anonymous and you're not, you know, you're not tracking people over a period of time?
Yeah, so if you think about it as, I'm going to use some cold terminology in this, so forgive me for it, but you're, as you start thinking of it in a data format, you're not going to follow somebody from start to finish, as you mentioned, or someone mentioned, like a focus group kind of a thing. We don't have that ability, and you certainly couldn't do that at a high enough level where you could get 100 people or 200 people to do that, because you need that many to trust a data subset. And so instead, what we do is we focus on buckets, and that's where those three buckets are when you're gathering your data. When I take a phone survey, I'm not going to check to see is this the same person who took a survey last time versus this time, I'm using an average or composite of all of that data as I look at it. And so when I separate out what I'm, the information and the data I'm getting back from our community committee, who are very engaged, versus from the members of the public who just happened to pick up the phone one day, I'm going to compare those two data points, and that's where I'm going to see a difference. We're going to ask the same questions of both groups, just like at the public engagement sessions, we're going to ask them exactly the same questions. And so now by looking at, comparing the responses that I get from each of those groups, because I asked the same questions, I can see, well, group A said this, but group B said this and group C said that, completely different. A lot of times, it's the same, but there are those key items that we identify that are different. And so that tells us, if those who are the most passionate say this, but everyone else says something differently, then we want to dig in and figure out why. Why are those who are the most passionate against this or for that? When we look at the community committee and we say, the more they're engaged, the more they really think we have to, I used the example before, so I'll do it again, we've got to fix drop off. Like, that's just, the more engaged you get, the more you realize we really have to do that thing, or whatever it might be for your district. That tells us, again, compared to those intuitive responses, we saw movement, we saw change in opinions. We'll ask people to rank these projects by priority, so we'll say, of these 10 projects, what are the most important to you? And so we'll compare the priority levels of this group versus the priority levels. Again, same questions for everyone, but the difference in responses is very informative for us.
Okay.
It's a lot of data terminology there, I apologize, but yes, we definitely get that data, and as we present you reports, we're going to give you the long, sort of more boring version, like I just did, where it's four or five pages of information, and then we'll give you the summary of, here's what this means in more layman's terms, but we definitely get into that level of the data. And we also look, I'll be honest, we get a little too detailed sometimes, where we look at different subsets within the polling to make sure that, hey, is each group represented? Because that's what's important to us, is to make sure as we bring this to you. You know, a school district could possibly move forward with the community engagement without help from someone like us. The problem is you're going to get feedback from those people who are already tied to the schools and pretty much very few other people, because you're going to be speaking to the people that you're already connected with. So that's going to be parents of current students and maybe some parents of previous students, and then hopefully, some of the people who come out to your school board students, and then hopefully, some of the people who come out to your school board meetings and your committees. That's great, but that is not a full representation of your district. And so that's where we come in, that's where we specialize, is to make sure that as you do this, every voice is heard in your community, and it's, it's a fair opportunity for everyone to give their feedback, so that when you build a plan and you say, "Hey, listen, this is our final plan," you can confidently say that this plan represents the wishes of our community, because everyone had a chance to be heard.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate the time. And if we have additional questions, we'll make sure that Dr. Kaskowski forwards them to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one action item that the board needs to be responsive to, and that is to amend the shield testing agreement. May I have a motion to approve an amendment of the end date of the COVID-19 testing support agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for shield testing?
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Moak, roll call, please.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Budmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sayed?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Yes.
Dr. Martelli?
Yes.
Dr. Bruno?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we will then move to public participation. Members of the public who wish to address the board should check in with Mrs. Moak and sign up to speak. Speakers are asked to maintain respectful decorum and limit comments to three minutes or less. I will, around 30 seconds, politely remind you to wrap up your comments. Please note that due to the YouTube community guidelines, the audio from the public participation portion of the meeting will not be available on our live stream. A recording of the public comments, however, will be available on the district's website tomorrow, and we have sent out communication to the community about this. Mrs. Moak, is there anyone who would like to make public comments?
No.
And I was just going to follow up. The CDC has a section on their website for their Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, and it can be found at cdc.gov/vaccinesafety/ensuring/safety/moderating/vaers, which is the acronym for Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. And you can find out information regarding adverse events related to the COVID vaccine on that site.
Okay, well, it's important. We appreciate getting information, and hopefully, we're doing our job in responding. Okay, we want to note two upcoming meetings. January 18th, a regular board meeting that will be here, and then on Tuesday, February 22nd, again, a regular board meeting, 6:30 here. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn to closed session to confidentially discuss Section 2C-1, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, and Section 2C-11 litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of the school board has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the school board finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Moak, roll call.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mrs. Budmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sayed?
Yes.
Dr. Bruno?